Before tonight's board meeting, Gerard Isaac, an eighth grade student from Albert Cammon Middle School, will lead us in a moment of reflection. Gerard is an Albert Cammon Honor Roll Award recipient, LEAP Mastery Award recipient, and Perfect Attendance Award recipient. He is a member of the Albert Cammon Basketball Team and Track Team. After the moment of reflection, Board Member Sonny Savoie will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Good evening. If you will, please bow your heads while we give all honor and reverence to our King of Kings. Heavenly Father, during this season to be grateful, we express heartfelt things to you for all things, big and small. Thank you for blessing us with the opportunity to gather at tonight's board meeting, where critical decisions are made that are in the best interest of all, who have a role in ensuring success for all scholars. That includes me. Lord, continue to impact your wisdom onto our brave and bold board members regarding all school-related matters, especially those linked to the social emotional wellness of us all and the academic achievement of us scholars. I pray for the continued strength of this board to include Superintendent Dr. Ken Ortling, our Assistant Superintendents, all executive staff members, all directors, principals, assistant principals, and most of all, I pray for our truly dedicated teachers and all other support staff members who are tirelessly paving the way for our future. In closing, Lord, despite the challenges our nation continues to face, frequently remind us to always seek you, praise you, and give thanks to you, as it is still a blessing for you and I to be citizens of the United States of America. I also pray for all honorable veterans who have served our country well. We trust and believe in you. Lord, may we all have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. In your most holy name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you very much, Gerard, for that moment of reflection, and best wishes to you for the remainder of your eighth grade year at Cammon and going forward in your high school years. This meeting of the Board for St. Charles Parish Public Schools is called to order. For the record, we have six Board Members in attendance. In attendance, we have Mrs. Bernard, Mr. Nakhan, Mr. Savoie, Mr. Smith, Mr. O'Quinn, and myself. Not in attendance is Mr. Alexander and Mr. Robichaud. Also in attendance at the board table this evening, we have our Superintendent, Dr. Ken Ortling, and the Executive Secretary for the Board and Superintendent, Mrs. Shelley Babino, and Senior Secretary, Anissa Collistock. The first item on the agenda this evening is item 2.01, and that is the Trailblazers Day Proclamation. Mr. John Smith served as a committee member for the Trailblazers Committee, so I'd ask Mr. Smith to please present that proclamation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sefra. Trailblazer Day Proclamation. Whereas on May 17, 1954, the Supreme Court unanimously ruled that public school segregation was unconstitutional in Brown versus the Board of Tobico. And whereas in November of 1965, 43 African-American students in St. Charles Parish Public Schools bravely chose to participate in the Freedom of Choice Plan, which allowed African-American students the opportunity to attend previously all-white schools. And whereas the St. Charles Parish Public Schools recognized that African-American history is everyone's history and established an African-American Studies course, which is taught at Destrehan and Honville High Schools. And whereas on November 16, 2022, a documentary celebrating the 1965 desegregation of St. Charles Parish Public Schools titled "Trailblazer" was premiered for the public at the Doctor Rodney R. Lefon Performing Arts Center. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board hereby expresses gratitude to the 43 trailblazers who paved the way in 1965 toward diversity, inclusion, and belonging for St. Charles Parish Public Schools. And be it further resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board pays tribute to these 43 students by declaring Wednesday, November 16, 2022, as Trailblazer Day in the St. Charles Parish Public School System. I move approval of this proclamation.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Savoie. Dr. Ortling, I understand you have some individuals you'd like to recognize.
Yes, sir. At this time, before I recognize, just, you know, as mentioned at our Trailblazer documentary celebration earlier this evening, we honor and celebrate these courageous students and their families for demonstrating through their actions and words amazing courage and resiliency during an unimaginably challenging time. They, their families, and the educators at the time paved the path to our current school system's success as well as our mission and our current vision. A mission and vision that prioritizes equity and inclusion of all students, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or any factors that marginalize individuals. As these trailblazers demonstrated many years ago and is reflected in our mission today, every student is entitled to equitable educational opportunities that empower each to become enthusiastic lifelong learners. We want to congratulate these, or really thank, these trailblazers, and I'd like to recognize those in attendance tonight, if you would please stand. James Colley. James Colley. He was here earlier. Ulysses Franta. Valerie Gaines. Deborah LaGrange-Halair. Cynthia LaGrange-Malair. Rhonda Lorio Smith. Eileen Weber. Braden Lewis. Danielle Walker. Janice Charles. Alethea Christine Bose. Dion Cannon. And anyone that may not have signed in, because I took that from a sign-in sheet, anyone that I may have missed that signed in? Thank you so much again for attending tonight's reflection. Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 2.02, Board and Superintendents' Recognition.
Students. School system students were named to an LMEA All-State Honor Ensemble. From Destrehan High School, Hayden Stute. Honville High School, Cade Crochet. Connor Cunningham. Satellite Center Team Member and Honville High School Student placed second in the Louisiana DZD Distracted Driving Video Contest, Ali Da Dufren. Schools. Schools received grants from Shell totaling $63,100. Destrehan High School Principal, Jason Mauder. Harry Hurst Middle School Principal, Dr. David Sheck Snyder. And Norco Elementary School Principal, Shannon Deodne. Employees. Harry Hurst Middle School Employee was named the 2022 Louisiana Middle School Counselor of the Year by the Louisiana School Counselor Association. Here to share more information about this unique individual who is amazing is Dr. Alice Cryer-Sumler.
Good evening, members of the Board and the audience members. It is both an honor and a privilege to share with you some background information about Louisiana's 2022 Middle School Counselor of the Year, Ms. Megan Duplessis. Ms. Duplessis began her career as an English Language Arts Teacher in 2007 at J.B. Martin Middle School and has served as a middle school counselor since 2012. She is currently the school counselor at Harry Hurst Middle School, where she services the seventh and eighth grade students. Ms. Duplessis received her Bachelor's of Arts in English, Master's of Education in School Counseling, and Certification for School Counseling from Southeastern Louisiana University, and is a provisional licensed professional counselor. She is a member of the American School Counseling and Louisiana School Counseling Associations. She has served on several district-level committees such as the Social Emotional Wellness Committee, SBLC Planning Committee, and the Crisis Intervention Manual Revision Committee. She has presented at the Louisiana School Counseling Association Conferences and our local counseling professional learning meetings. On behalf of the School Board and Superintendent Ortling, we congratulate you, Ms. Megan Duplessis, Louisiana 2022 Middle School Counselor of the Year.
On behalf of the Board, congratulations to all of those receiving recognitions this evening. We really appreciate you representing the district in such a positive way. At this time, we're going to take a short recess and reconvene in about two or three minutes to conduct the business portion of the meeting. Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. Have a good evening. Back in session to conduct the business portion of the meeting, the first item on the agenda is item 3.01, October 17, 2022 Committee Meetings and October 19, 2022 Regular Board Meeting Minutes.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. O'Quinn. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 3.02, Automobile Physical Damage Insurance. St. Charles Parish Public Schools purchases property insurance to protect the district from acts of God. After discussions at the recent board retreat, the Board decided to move forward with receiving quotes to cover white fleet and 2017 or older buses for auto physical damage coverage. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on November 14, 2022, and is aligned with GO C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move to reapprove the automobile physical damage insurance policy at a cost of $110,757. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, seconded by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 3.03, Requests for Qualifications: Short-Term and Long-Term Disability Broker. The Risk Management and Insurance Department solicits brokers for short-term and long-term disability on a three-year cycle. This is a new established cycle that will begin in 2023. In order to receive the most qualified brokerage services, St. Charles Parish Public Schools is seeking qualifications from firms to provide short-term and long-term disability brokerage services from 2023 through 2026. This item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, November 14, 2022, and is aligned with GO D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move that we approve the request for qualifications for short-term and long-term disability broker. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, seconded by Mr. Savoie. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 3.04, Bid Authorization Requests for RK Smith Middle School Edition and Main Corridor Flooring Replacement. The RK Smith Middle School Edition and Main Corridor Flooring Replacement Project is an approved project of the 2022 bond issue. The construction plans for the RK Smith Middle School Edition and Main Corridor Flooring Replacement Project have been completed by the architect and are ready for bid. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, November 14, 2022, and is aligned with GO D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the bid authorization request for the RK Smith Middle School Edition and Main Corridor Flooring Replacement Project.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 3.05, Bid Authorization Request: East Bank Head Start Renovation and Addition. The East Bank Head Start Renovation and Addition Project is an approved project of the 2022 bond issue. The construction plans for the East Bank Head Start Renovation and Addition Project have been completed by the architect and are ready for bid. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, November 14, 2022, and is aligned with GO D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the bid authorization request for the East Bank Head Start Renovation and Addition Project.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 3.06, Proposed 2023-2024 School Session Calendar Second Reading and Adoption. School Board Policy mandates that the School Board shall adopt a calendar for the forthcoming school session. A committee composed of a School Board Member, a Business and Industry Representative, Central Office Administrators, Principals, Teachers, Parents, and Students prepared a calendar for board approval in accordance with our policy and procedures. Adoption of the calendar for the forthcoming school year as early as possible allows for the information to be disseminated to all stakeholders in a timely fashion. This agenda item was reviewed at the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, October 17, 2022, and it was reviewed and accepted for a first reading at the meeting of the Board on Wednesday, October 19, 2022. It is aligned with GO A of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Move approval of the proposed 2023-2024 School Session Calendar for the second reading and adoption.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Savoie. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 3.07, Math Interventionist Position. Due to the decreased funding allocation provided by the Education Excellence Fund Grant as notified on October 10, 2022, it was determined that one of four current math interventionist positions would not be funded. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy at the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, November 14, 2022, and is aligned with GO A of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Move approval for the funding for one of the four math interventionist positions at a cost of $101,000.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Savoie. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 3.08, Policy 5.1.7(c) Cameras in Special Education Classrooms and Settings First Reading. Louisiana Revised Statute, Section 17, Paragraph 1948, requires school districts to place, operate, and maintain video cameras with audio recording capability in certain self-contained classrooms and other special education settings for students with disabilities upon the request of a parent or legal guardian for the purpose of promoting student safety. The statute is intended to protect students who, because of a disability, may not be able to report mistreatment by district employees or other students. These procedures have been specifically developed for purposes of promoting student safety and complying with Louisiana law. This item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, November 14, 2022, and is aligned with GO A of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Move approval.
Mr. President?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Savoie. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 3.09, Compensation Alignment for the Before and After School Childcare Aid Position. The Board approved a pay rate increase for all AM/PM positions at the June 15, 2022 School Board Meeting. The pay rate increase became effective at the start of the 2022-2023 school year. Although the district before and after school childcare aid position received a 10% increase, the position's current pay of $11.63 per hour is less than the AM/PM rate of $14.54 per hour. In order to ensure an equitable pay rate for the district before and after school childcare aid position, a pay rate change of $14.54 per hour is recommended. The revised pay rate will be retroactive to the start of the 2022-2023 school year. This item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, November 14, 2022, and is aligned with GO B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the compensation alignment for the before and after the school childcare aid position. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoie, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? I'll just note that the approximate cost for this is $22,000 a year. If there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. And that motion passes. Item 3.10, Revisions to Policing Procedure 4.6.3(c), Employment of Retired Personnel Second Reading and Adoption. Based on feedback from Forthart Consulting, Inc. in a review of Policy and Procedure 4.6.3(c), Employment of Retired Personnel, it was determined that significant revisions were required. Policy and Procedure 4.6.3(c), Employment of Retired Personnel, was reviewed and accepted for a first reading at the meeting of the Board on Wednesday, October 19. for a first reading at the meeting of the Board on Wednesday, October 19, 2022, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the revisions to Policy and Procedure 4.6.3(c), Employment of Retired Personnel, for a second reading and adoption.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoy, II and by Mr. Okwane. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 3.11, Revisions to Procedure 4.6.10, Employee Discipline: Second Reading and Adoption. Based on feedback from Forthought Consulting, Inc., in a review of Procedure 4.6.10, Employee Discipline, it was determined that significant revisions were required. Procedure 4.6.10, Employee Discipline, was reviewed and accepted for a first reading at the meeting of the Board on Wednesday, October 19, 2022, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the revisions to Procedure 4.6.10, Employee Discipline, for a second reading and adoption.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Okwane, II and by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 3.12, Revisions to Policy and Procedure 4.7.2, Military Leave: Second Reading and Adoption. Based on feedback from Forthought Consulting, Inc., in a review of Policy and Procedure 4.7.2, Military Leave, it was determined that significant revisions were required. Policy and Procedure 4.7.2, Military Leave, was reviewed and accepted for a first reading at the meeting of the Board on Wednesday, October 19, 2022, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the revisions to Policy and Procedure 4.7.2, Military Leave, for a second reading and adoption.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoy, II and by Mr. Okwane. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 3.13, Job Description Revisions. The superintendent is responsible for recommending job description revisions to the Board. After careful analysis of duties and responsibilities of the Director of Child Welfare and Attendance and the Executive Director of Student Services, revisions were needed to support school system operations. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, November 14, 2022, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the job description revisions for student services and executive director of child welfare and attendance and student services.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoy, II and by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. The next item is Item 3.14, Personnel Items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the Board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, November 14, 2022, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I make a motion to receive the personnel items presented to the Board at the Monday committee meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoy, II and by Mr. Nakand. Any discussion?
Mr. President, in our audience tonight is one person that's being recognized from this report, Ms. Alexis Cannon. She's our new Public Information Coordinator of Special Programs. Ms. Alexis is a graduate of Hanvo High School and our Satellite Center as well. Please stand and be recognized. Welcome to the team. We figured she'd be here quite a bit in the future, so she might as well learn tonight.
Any further discussion? Okay, please cast your vote. Item 3.15, Bid Acceptance for Purchase of School Buses. In a continued effort to upgrade the parish-owned bus fleet, the Transportation Department sought bids for the purchase of nine school buses, and one bid was received. The bid opening was held on Tuesday, October 25, 2022. Kent Mitchell Bus Sales and Service, Inc., submitted the bid for five regular 65-passenger buses, two school buses equipped to transport students with special needs, and zero bids were submitted for two activity buses to transport students to school events. This agenda item was reviewed at the Transportation Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, November 14, 2022, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the purchase of seven buses, as detailed in your announcement a minute ago, at a cost of $850,819.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakand, II and by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 3.16, Requests for Proposals: USDA Southeast Commodities Processing Cooperative Agreement. The Child Nutrition Program provides school cafeterias with the necessary food to serve nutritious meals. In order to have the best quality food, the district has requested proposals for the USDA Southeast Commodities Processing Cooperative Agreement. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, November 14, 2022, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the request for proposals for the USDA Southeast Commodities Processing Cooperative Agreement.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakand, II and by Mr. Savoy. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 3.17, Accounts Payable for the Month of October, 2022. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Requests for approval of these transactions is normally made to the Board musively. The Board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, November 14, 2022, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of October, 2022, the amount of $6,460,036.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakand, II and by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. We now move into closing items, beginning with Item 4.01, Standing Committee Reports. We'll now receive reports from the Chair of any standing committee.
Mr. President, Capital Improvements Committee met on Monday, reviewed two items: Bid Authorization Requests for R.K. Smith Middle School, the Addition and Main Corridor Floor Replacement, as well as Bid Authorization Requests for East Bank Head Start Renovations and Addition. Both those items were brought to the Board table tonight and approved. In Mr. Alexander's absence, I also chaired the Transportation Committee, where we discussed the bid acceptance for the purchase of seven school buses. That item was also brought to the Board table and approved tonight. And that completes both of my reports.
Thank you for those reports, Mr. Nakand. Appreciate it.
Mr. President, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee met on Monday, November 14. We had two items on our agenda which were brought forward at tonight's meeting. The first was the proposed 2023-24 school session calendar, second reading and adoption, which was approved. And the second was the approval of the funding for one math interventionist position. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. President, the Risk Management and Insurance Committee met on Monday night. We first of all, we had our monthly legal update, in which we went into executive session. We had an update by our attorneys, and then we had two items that we discussed afterwards. That was the request for qualifications for short-term and long-term disability broker, which was brought to the Board table tonight, and also the automobile physical damage insurance update, which we went ahead and brought to the Board table as well and passed that as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Mr. President, the Policy and Personnel Committee meeting met on Monday night, and we discussed provisions to Policy 5.1.7(c), Cameras in Special Education Classroom, Compensation Alignment for the Before and After-School Childcare Aid Position, revisions to Policy and Procedure 4.6.3(c) for Employment of Retired Personnel, 3.11, which was revisions to Procedure 4.6.10, Employee Discipline, revisions to Policy and Procedure 4.7.2 for Military Leave, Job Description Revisions, and Personnel Items. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Savoy. The Finance and Audit Committee also met on Monday, November 14, and we covered three items. Two of those items came to the full Board this evening and were approved. Those two items were the request for proposals for the USDA Southeast Commodities Process and Cooperative Agreement, and also the accounts payable for the month of October 2022. And the committee also received a report from my internal auditor, Mr. Adam Neighbors, on the results of the audits of the Student Activity Funds for school year 2021-2022. We'll now move on to Item 4.02, and that's the superintendent's report, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Wharton.
Thank you, Mr. President. In 1994, the 103rd Congress passed Joint Resolution 413, designating November as National Family Literacy Month. National Family Literacy Month is an opportunity for families to learn and read together. It also celebrates the work literacy programs do to empower families. Be on the lookout for family literacy information and activities on our social media platforms. Leap testing. High school students enrolled in leap courses and leap retesters will take leap assessments the week of December 7 through December 9. On these days, only students participating in the leap assessment will attend school. All students will participate in remote learning activities for non-leap courses. Our high schools will provide further information to students and families. Athletics update. Destrian High School finished the football season with a perfect 10-0 record and will crown district champions. The Fighting Wildcats are currently ranked third in the playoffs and will take on Dutchtown this Friday night. Hanvo High School finished the season 6-4 and will rank 16th heading into the playoffs. Unfortunately, the Fighting Tigers lost to Watchtower High School this past Friday night in the first round. Both Hanvo High School and Destrian High School swim teams are heading to Suffer for the state swim meet. In volleyball, Hanvo High School volleyball team finishes the regular season 26-12 and advanced to the first round of the playoffs, where they were defeated by Suffer, where they defeated Suffer High School. The Lady Tiger volleyball team fell in the second round of the playoffs to number-one-ranked, I believe, Dominican High School. In cross-country, Destrian High School and Hanvo High School recently competed in the state cross-country meet in Acadish this past weekend. In arts update, both Destrian and Hanvo High School marching bands competed in the Louisiana Showcase of Marching Bands in Lafayette on November 12 and the LMEA District 7 Marching Festival on November 6, receiving rave reviews from judges for their presence and top-notch performances. We'd like to congratulate our Chief Financial Officer, Ronald White, and his staff for their efforts that resulted in the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, or GFOA, awarding St. Charles Parish Public Schools Board the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending on June 30, 2021. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. This certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. Congratulations, Mr. White, to you and your department. As of today, we have incurred a total of $43,988,489 in recovery expenses from Hurricane Ida. We are projecting future costs to be approximately $8.5 million, including $6.6 million for the large construction projects and $1.5 million for smaller projects. We have received $30,981,499 in insurance payments thus far. And finally, Thanksgiving break. As a reminder, school buildings are closed for the Thanksgiving holidays, beginning November 21 through the 25th. Central office will be open on November 21 and the 22nd. On behalf of our school board, myself, and our entire school system, we'd like to express our heartfelt thanks to the families and community of St. Charles Parish for your support for our AAA school system. We are thankful and blessed to have your continued partnership and trust in educating, supporting, and caring for your children. You and I, we are St. Charles Parish Public Schools. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Orling. Any discussion to come before the Board, before we adjourn? entertain a motion to adjourn? We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye. Stand adjourned.